At our new time, starting time of 6:00 P. M., will everybody please rise and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We do have two public hearings that are actually going to be adjourned to a future date. The first one is the Michael Smilkstein item, and that will be adjourned to the next meeting date of February 21st while they re-advertise. And the estates at Phillips Farms, that has previously been adjourned and will be adjourned to the February 21st meeting as well. So if there's anybody here for either one of those public hearings, please know that we will be adjourning those and moving on, and we'll be talking about them on the 21st of February. We have upcoming meeting dates of February 21st, 2023, and March 21st, 2023. We also have minutes from the meeting held on December 5th, 2022. Could I have a motion to approve those minutes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Carries. First item on the agenda is Hudson Valley Logistics Center. Welcome back.
Nice to see everyone again. So I'm Ryan Kelly from Blue Water Property Group. This is Mike Fine from Lang and Engineering. So we're here tonight following the last time we were here was December 5th for our site plan approval. So since then, we've gotten very far down the road with a potential tenant, and we're here to discuss some potential field changes that have already been talked about with the town consultants, which we're hoping that you'll be excited about, all of which are compliant with everything that's already been approved. So first, so there's three, three major changes. The first is lowering the building height from 40 clear height to 36, minimizing our visual impact. The second is something that was talked about with HVEA during our initial approval process, and that's moving the guardhouse to a more conducive location from the northwest corner, I'm sorry, northeast down to the southwest corner, and Mike will walk through the details. And the third is we're going to move the one, the office that was previous in the northwest corner to the northeast corner. And with this, we're still going to keep storefront glass in the northwest, so the view, if you're, you're going east along Route 52, that you'll be able to see that. But now we'll also have glass in the northeast corner, which should be more aesthetically pleasing. So I'll let Mike walk through the details.
Thanks, Ryan. So again, Mike Fine from Lang and Engineering. I mean, Ryan, you definitely covered a lot of the pretty basic changes that we're making here, but just to give you a little bit more in terms of how it will flow on the site, we, trucks will still come in the south entrance, we're not changing that. It will come along this southern road to now this guardhouse, and it will come in predominantly for the prospective tenant that's taking over the larger, I don't know.
Apparently not. Can I take this with me?
Yes.
Okay. So I'll start over. So we're talking about trucks coming in on the south side. They will come in, they will hit the guardhouse. This will be a secured entrance, and for the prospective tenant, that's going to take space there, which is 80% of the building. They will have access to 100% of the northern truck court and about 60% of the southern truck court. So, so they'll come in, they'll find their loading space, and they'll come out the same way. As you will remember from before, there is the eastern access that trucks could come in and access essentially full circle around the building. This will become, not eliminated, but won't be used. It'll only be used under emergency conditions. So any trucks coming in here would be under an emergency condition, whether it be a fire truck or even a truck that, you know, maybe there's a blockage over here or something like that. So, so it reduces how many trucks would be over here and essentially eliminates them until it's ever needed. This, this guardhouse up here will be replaced with a gate, so this will be a locked gate. They'll, they'll be able to come here, trucks will come in, and they'll go back out. They cannot go this way. Ryan talked about the height. I think that's pretty self-explanatory. We don't need to go through that in any great detail. The right-in, right-out access will also be gated. This won't be used because it, it won't be needed essentially because we want to really secure this truck court area. We envision a lot of the cars to use this parking area over here.
Can I ask a question on that, those points right there? Has, like, the fire advisory board, like, have they looked at the changes here for the emergency egress?
I don't believe so, but we can certainly sit with them and talk to them about it. All of these will be, you know, there'll be Knox boxes, things like that. So it's not like locked out that they can't get through. It's just gated for daily operations.
Yeah, but I mean, it is a substantive traffic flow change, so I would think that they kind of have to take a look at that.
Yep. We're still providing that full circulation, but we understand that these will, these will now be gated, and they'll need their access when they need it. We understand that.
Yes.
Down on the south truck court, we'll have a similar situation where this will be gated off for this tenant space versus this tenant space, and, and the trucks will come in, come in here, use this southern truck court, and then come back out. Essentially, those are the changes. There's, there's not much else to it.
Any perimeter changes to the building aside from the height, obviously?
The height and, and as Ryan explained, the office space. So this, this was dedicated as the office space originally under the approval you issued. We're going to slide it over to here just because it assists this perspective tenant, but we're going to leave this in place so the look of it will be the same as what you approved.
So everything's inside the same?
Same perimeter. Yeah, it didn't change.
Very good.
So, so now the, the front northwest and northeast elevations are, are they symmetrical? Or do they look pretty much the same, same kind of design?
This side and this side?
Yes.
Yeah, pretty much the same, yeah.
Which is the direction that we kind of wanted to see when you were going through the process.
Yep.
That sounds great. Birmingham walls are all still in place as before?
Yep. Everything has stayed the same, no changes to the other items you requested that we had.
Is there going to be any issue with, you know, since the trucks aren't going to be doing a full circle around there, that you'll have two-way traffic with trucks going along the left side of there?
No issues with the traffic movements themselves. When we ran this initially, we, we made sure that we still had that two-way flow of traffic and that trucks can get by each other. All the roads have been designed to support that.
Any other questions?
So is this, I just have a quick question. Is this the plan that you're going to want the planning board to approve tonight? This is the, the exact layout? Okay.
Yes.
I just want to make sure that, and the date on that is, I just want to make sure we have that.
Well, if it-
See, the thing is, I want to reference whatever we're approving, I want to reference the plan set so that we have the proper plan set.
Got it. So the, the date on this is October 18th. That's when we generated it, but if it answers your question, we are about to make a full submission addressing all of the engineering comments that we had gotten on the original development plan incorporating these changes.
Okay.
So that would be the set that we probably would want you to refer.
Okay, perfect. So we'll have to refer to that date in the, in the final resolution. Okay.
And we're targeting to have that, the set's complete. We're going to submit sometime probably early next week.
So what would that date be, Michelle?
He hasn't submitted yet.
Do you want to follow the date, January 24th?
Sure. Okay, I think that's-
Is it away from now?
Yeah.
Do you have elevations of what the lower height will look like?
I don't believe I have, I have renderings that I can show you, but I don't know that it'll look any different to you, but I can show you.
Or maybe a comparative, you know, from the old to the new in the rendering? Just to, you know, maybe get a clearer.
You know, you're not going to be able to see it from these, unfortunately. I don't have anything that indicates the marker of its height, but it is essentially four feet lower. I mean, you're not going to see that in terms of the rendering, and I didn't bring the old rendering. It's a good question, but I just wasn't-
I was just curious.
Yeah. It's a four-foot drop in the building height essentially is what happens.
Now, the other corner is going to look like the glass-in section that was originally offices?
Yeah. Yep. So this will be on that side as well.
Yeah, so that's what will be on the southeast. We have a rendering of the north.
That's, that's one here.
And was the change in height just strictly due to maybe the tenant type use?
That's exactly.
They wanted lower ceilings. That's their effective operational height?
Yeah, there's a head-to-head with just making sure that this corner goes to give a function.
Sure. Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Just on the draft resolution, there's a condition number one about review of the alternative layout by the, and approval by the ARC. That's not actually needed. I think that condition can be removed because ARC's actually reviewed this, and they've incorporated the comments, and this board actually has full architectural approval authority, so that comment is actually not needed. And then there are a whole list of other comments, but there are a whole list of other conditions. Those can be incorporated by reference when you read through the resolutions since they're all from the prior resolution.
Okay, and I think the only other addition might be referring it to the fire advisory board. Okay?
Yes.
Okay, well, so if there's no objection, I'll go ahead and read a portion of the resolution to the record. The full resolution will be available in the planning department, so I'll skip all of the conditions that were previously approved that are contained in here, but that I will not go through. So the name of the site plan is Hudson Valley Logistics Center. Name of applicant, Canham Hudson Valley Logistics Owner LLC. Location, 500 South Drive. Resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman. Whereas the planning board granted final site plan approval for the C.A.N.A.M. Hudson Valley Logistics Center LLC on December 5th, 2022 is shown on plans entitled Site Plan and Subdivision Documents Hudson Valley Logistics Center Prepared by Lang and Engineering, Environmental Surveying Landscape Architecture and Geology DPC, White Plains, New York, last revised November 30th, 2022, which plan set consists of 26 pages. And whereas the applicant submitted a letter requesting minor changes to the approved site plan on December 29th, 2022, and whereas the applicant appeared before the planning board to discuss the proposed changes on January 17th, 2023, and whereas the planning board determined that the proposed minor site plan revisions will not result in substantial changes from the approved site plan and thereby determines that a new public hearing on the minor site plan revisions is not required, therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby grants amended site plan approval as shown on plans entitled Hudson Valley Logistics Center Aldrin Layout Prepared by Lang and Engineering Environmental Surveying Landscape Architecture and Geology DPC, White Plains, New York, dated October 18th, 2022, and to be updated dated January 24th, 2023. Subject to the condition of referral to the fire advisory board and subject to all the other conditions contained in the previous resolution, be it further resolved within five business days of the adoption of this resolution, the chair or other duly authorized member of the planning board shall cause a copy of this resolution to be filed with the town clerk and a copy sent to the applicant-owner. Could I have a second?
So moved.
And we'll do a roll call vote. Board member Ed Miyoshi?
Aye.
Board member Sarah Bledsoe?
Aye.
Board member Richard Campbell?
Aye.
Board member Donald Pepe?
Aye.
And chairperson John Eichman? I'm an aye. It's approved. Thank you very much. Good luck with that.
Thank you.
Hi, Amy Vamadiri for Hopewell Market with Dan Stokosa. This was approved last month, and we found out that the septic system for the existing house was under the area where a few of the parking spaces were proposed. So the parking has been reconfigured. All the septic components are shown on the plan, and they were verified by Mr. Bryant and myself on January 9th. So the only change is to the parking layout, and the lighting was revised to provide a full cutoff light. The photometrics were rerun, and now the entire parking lot is lit, I think to an acceptable level, but if we have to change that, we will. And that's it. That's the only modification. So the septic's components are now shown on the plan. The parking was changed, and the lighting fixture was changed, and wayfinding signs were added to the entrance and exit to show the pattern.
Great.
So we're here for an amended site plan approval.
Any questions by board members or professionals? Seems fairly straightforward, Amy, so I will offer a resolution into the record. Name of site plan, Hopewell Market. Name of applicant, Charlie's Real Estate/Mare Fakuri. Location, 844-846 Route 376. Resolution offered by planning board member John Eichman. Whereas the planning board approved the amended site plan for 844-846 Route 376 on December 20th, 2022, as represented on a map entitled 844-846 Route 376 Hopewell Market, prepared by Dan Stokosa Engineering, dated September 30th, 2021, and last revised November 23rd, 2022. Whereas the applicant is proposing to modify the amended site plan approved on 12/2022 to, one, include both existing sewage disposal systems, septic tanks, and the pump chamber for the market, and, two, to reconfigure the proposed parking area to eliminate any pavement over the SDS absorption areas. Now, therefore be it resolved that the planning board hereby approves a revised amended site plan for 844-846 Route 376, as represented on a map entitled 844-846 Route 376 Hopewell Market, prepared by Dan Stokosa Engineering, dated September 30th, 2021, and last revised January 9th, 2023, with the following conditions. Number one, the approval is conditioned on the site meeting all Dutchess County Health Department requirements. Number two, the removal of all seating, fencing, and other structures within the New York State DOT right-of-way at the front of the building. And number three, satisfactory resolution of all comments in the CPL letter dated 12/16/2022.
And now you can scratch number four because I've reviewed it, and, and I'm fine with the lighting plan.
And the HVA, the HVEA letter dated 12/16/2022, and number four, scratch. May I have a second on that resolution?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Board member Ed Miyoshi?
Aye.
Board member Sarah Bledsoe?
Aye.
Board member Richard Campbell?
Aye.
Board member Donald Pepe?
Aye.
And chairperson John Eichman? I'm an aye. It's approved. Thank you, Amy.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda is Fire Risk Bridges Subdivision. Is anyone for the applicant here for that item? Okay?
Hi, Amy Vamadiri for Bridges Subdivision. We just received the comment letter today. Most of the changes are SWIP-related, and we will address them. We have offered to provide a vegetative buffer around the parcels.
Gotcha. Excuse, so, yeah, let me open the public hearing. Could I have a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. The public hearing is open. Please go ahead, Amy. Thank you.
So vegetative buffer will be provided around the border of the parcels. We have SWIP comments that will be addressed. We received them today. We do need to circulate for a lead agent, and we have a site meeting requested with the town highway superintendent to verify the site distance and the drainage along the road. I think that was the most of the outstanding, outstanding comments.
So, yeah, I think we also talked about clear cutting and establishing a limit to that as well as, and I'm sorry, stormwater. Have we?
Yeah, she-
Yeah, the vegetative buffer. I think that there's a septic system issue. We have to make sure that we're in the perfect location to determine how much of a buffer we can give on that area, but probably 100 feet, 75 feet at least along the exterior boundary of the parcels. So along the back here and along both sides of the existing, of the whole parcel.
So there'll be a clearly defined, once you've established, like, where you can have your septic? Is that the?
Correct.
Okay.
So we may have to clear for septic system installation, so if we have to maintain, you know, if we can fit 75 feet, then we will. If we can only fit 50 feet there, we'll determine the, the width of the buffer.
So, so you, you have yet to actually define that line. You'll be doing that and bringing that back to us at a future meeting?
Correct.
Right? Okay. And you still need to advertise that, I'm sorry, or you need to?
I think we're probably advertise, we need to circulate for lead agent.
Circulate for lead agency. Okay. And meet with the highway department.
And meet with the highway department on site.
Okay.
And that's been requested, but not yet scheduled.
So it's still, still a few things to, to accomplish. Any questions by board members?
No, I think that from my standpoint, the questions that are still outstanding are what she's got to define.
Right. Any questions before I open it up to the public by our professionals? Is there a member of the public that would like to speak in favor or opposed to the project? If you'd please just sign in. Do we have a sign-in sheet? I'm sure we do.
I don't see a pen, but, Rick Martin, 198 Devon Farms Road. I'm not here to either support or argue the point. I just have a question. When we talk about this buffer, is that a low-ground vegetation buffer? Is that the existing tree line? And I understand the, the width of that will be determined both on the parallel axis and the vertical axis. So that's really what my concern is. Is that existing trees that will remain? Or is that low-ground plantings that could be called vegetation? And I'm not here to be a pan the neck on definitions or just trying to get an understanding.
Are there other members of the public that would like to speak for or against the project? If not, we'll ask Amy. Amy, is that, are you able to respond to that question for Rick?
The buffer will be a non-disturbance buffer, so as it is now, it will remain in perpetuity. It'll be a deed restriction.
Okay, if there are no other members of the public who wish to speak in the project, I'll accept a motion to adjourn this. Now, I guess the question would be-
Are you going to be-
Amy, what, when will you be ready to actually come back before?
Well, if we're going to circulate for lead agent, we'll need the 30 days to expire before you can close the public hearing, I believe, right?
Yeah, but you have it. I mean, if you get it out in the next couple days, you have 30 days, you can do it.
So if that's the case, if we do get it out, then we'll come back at the February meeting?
So you'd like us to adjourn it to the February 21st meeting date?
Yep.
Could I have a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. We'll see you at the next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
The next item on the agenda, as we mentioned, the estates at Phillips Farm has been adjourned to February 21st, and Michael Smilkstein has been adjourned to February 21st. Actually, do we need to do that formally, Michael?
No, you're fine. You announce it at the beginning.
Okay. So that brings us to sketch plans, and the first sketch plan is microgrid network.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're here to answer some questions you had last time. We have a short presentation.
This is Rebecca Barr from Microgrid Networks. I'm Tim Dumbleton, Chief Operating Officer, Microgrid Networks. Thank you guys for your time. There are five items that we want to talk about. Rebecca's going to talk about the first three of those, or two of those?
First, two of those.
Yeah.
Can we start?
Yes, please. Go ahead.
All right. So the items that we got questions about last time were noise, safety, and interconnection path. So again, to reorient everybody to the location of the site, in green, we're showing the lease area for the battery storage. In red, we're showing the I Park Firehouse. In blue, to the south, we're seeing the Shenandoah Substation, which is our interconnection point to the site. We looked at some available information we have on noise testing data. We're looking specifically at the inverter as the loudest piece of equipment on the installation, and this is a typical kind of example of the noise samples that we've seen so far. We are looking at data at 1 meter, 5 meters, and 10 meters, and just to give you an example of how that's going to look like. So noise levels at 16.4 feet, 5 meters, these are noise levels that are less than 10 decibels above the background or ambient noise levels. And when we're looking at measurements at 30 feet, 32 feet, it's barely, it's equal to the background noise levels. So these are, again, examples. We don't have the data for the specific inverter that we're going to be using, but they're pretty much similar in nature. So we just wanted to give you a sense of what we're looking at, and this is something that, again, we're installing also in urban environments, residential areas, and this is the data that we, the most recent data that we have on noise. And we wanted to just share that with you and see if you had any additional questions on that.
These are inverters we're using in the city. They're well-known inverters. The technology's changing pretty quickly, and we haven't finalized exactly which the ones we'll be using here. So we're using ones that we know that is, that the sound levels we expect will be quite similar.
You said the city?
I'm sorry.
Didn't you say in the city?
Correct. We have two projects under construction, one in Brooklyn and one in Massacre, Queens.
So you're saying that in the city, this increases the, the noise level by 10 decibels from the background noise?
If we're looking at a distance of 16.4 feet, it's less than 10, yes. But if we're talking about 32.8, it's the same as background noise.
I just wanted to be clear, this is all referencing projects in the city?
This is-
That you're 10 decibels higher than city noise, the city sound level?
No, this is test conditions. This is in the facility, so I can get, get you more information on the background noise that was compared to, but it's not in-
But it was conducted in the city, though?
No, no.
No, these are conducted at the-
Testing facility, and specifically this in China.
Okay, so the DBA that you're saying that this is, that this would be 10 above is not, you haven't measured the noise levels here, basically. You're not comparing it to what the existing noise levels are at this site.
Yeah, we haven't taken any measurements on site. It's something that we plan to do, yes.
So what's, so the reference is where?
It's a, it's a testing facility, so it's a, it's an installation where you have a full installation of the equipment, including the inverters and the battery enclosures. So it's comparing to the, the, obviously, the noise background is not accurate to the site, but it's something that we will provide.
So there's a possibility certainly that the noise level here would be lower, that the, that the ambient background would be lower?
Correct, but just to be clear-
But the numbers aren't that-
The numbers are not that high.
Correct.
I, I understand that we have to do a test relative to here.
Yeah, but I-
The testing facility is not like super loud. It's not, we're not, not sitting on, you know, busy street at the test facility. So we expect that, that will, that if you're 30 feet away, it's not going to be any noisier than any background noise. These are not facilities that are loud, is the general case.
So what we would do is when, if, if and when they become a formal application, we would ask them to do, provide us noise data, and we would submit it to our noise consultant, and they could review it and make sure that they were comfortable with it.
Yeah, the numbers are low.
Yeah, the last thing we're hoping- Yeah, the last thing we're hoping to today is to know the lead agency, so we can actually start all the testing. And we're also finalizing the inverter selection, et cetera, so, in that direction.
Second item on the agenda was safety. We wanted to kind of give you an overview of the NFPA 855 that was mentioned last time, to give you an understanding of what we're planning to provide. We're also proposing to follow the NISERTA guidelines for permitting for ESS. We are going to provide the links which are missing from the version of the presentation that I sent to you, but we'll share that in an email. For the most part, we're talking about providing, obviously, all the information about the system, the location, the size, the fire rating certifications as required by NFPA 855 and NISERTA, all the listings, information about the monitoring system, the EMS location, signage, et cetera. We're going to provide the essential data, starting with the 9548 test results, which will determine all the clearances that are required for separation between ESS units, as well as the 9540 certificate for the energy storage that is selected. Normally, the energy storage enclosures, they come with smoke and fire detections that are connected to the fire alarm system, as well as, in some cases, smoke and heat detection. Fire suppression is proposed to be water-based, this is what we are doing in our installations in the city as well. NFPA 855 allows for either NFPA 13 or 15 systems with a minimum GPM of .0 per square foot. Signage, obviously, and impact protection plan depending on vehicle movement around the facility to prevent any damage to the equipment. Monitoring services, the EMS is being monitored 24/7 by certified and trained personnel to kind of go through all the alerts the system is generating and contacting the fire department if needed, in addition to the fire alarm system that we are installing. Explosion prevention mitigation per NFPA 855, we are looking at either NFPA 68, which is ventilation, to maintain LFL lower flammability limit of below 20, or the NFPA 69, which is requiring deflagration panels that are mechanical and are not relying on any electrical systems. Documentation, we're going to provide maintenance manuals, operation manuals, and service and maintenance logs. Commissioning and decommissioning, and I know that was a question that was asked last time, we're going to provide detailed information about how the system is being decommissioned from the manufacturer. That's something that we will provide during the process. Emergency operation plan, safety shutdown procedures, and how to safely de-energize the system. This is a critical point, energy storage systems are, remain energized even when they're disconnected from the source. There is required training for personnel to be able to de-energize the system safely. Training we mentioned. And the disconnect means is going to be in accordance with NFPA 70, documents are going to be provided.
No, I'm sorry.
We wanted to give you a little bit, you had a question?
I do. Once this, let's say if you get approvals for this, who ends up taking ownership of this? Is it, you own and operate it the entire time?
We're the owner and operator, we put central Hudson controls when we're storing and when we're injecting. So we have a central operation system that will monitor this 24/7. And, you know, the basic, I know there's a lot of kind of 855, but the basic fact of this is that this is a small battery that is scaled up many, many times. So what you do is you test the small battery under a bunch of conditions, and then you kind of wrap it with a whole bunch of safety mechanisms, and you basically monitor it all the time, so that you know if there's anything happening in any given little cell, you can, you know that there's a problem. So the cells are quite, you know, there's a whole lot of, these cells are used all over the place. But what you really want to do is have a great deal of monitoring, way more than you have anywhere else. And that's what all these kind of safety systems and 855 are. We're putting them out in the middle of Brooklyn, in the middle of Queens, and we have a lot of experience with all these safety systems. And the next piece is making sure that everyone in the local area knows how to address them, anything if there is an issue. So we sit with fire department, we actually sit with the individual station house that will be, would be the one responding, and make sure that they're all comfortable with everything and how it operates, right? There's a lot of remote monitoring capabilities, you can shut everything down remotely.
So I guess, but in keeping with that question about ownership. So let's say at some point in time, your financial ability becomes unable to decommission this. Are they prepared to like post a bond or do something so that, you know, the town or, you know, we're not left holding the bag on something like that? Because I would have to say that it's a fairly substantial cost if, in fact, let's just say your company went bankrupt, whatever it may be. I'm not going to cast any shadow of doubt on you, but, you know, that would become something that would be, we'd have to protect our interest as a town.
Yeah, I Park is concerned about the same thing. So maybe there's a discussion where, I mean, if we're making them comfortable, I assume that you'll be comfortable as well. They're the owners of the land, so they have more desire for this to work out than anyone else. So typically, we are posting, you know, we have a lot of, in our lease, we have a lot of responsibility for cleanup, et cetera.
Okay.
We're providing guarantees to them for that.
Mm-hmm. But the thing that they could fail too, you know what I mean? So there's got to be some kind of connective. Like if you're going to own this thing, you have to be able to own it from beginning to end. Because obviously, it has an end life, right? It's a, you know, has a capacity for, I'm just going to say, 10 years, 15 years, 20 years?
20 years.
Okay.
The thing itself is quite valuable at the end of those 20 years.
Yeah.
The recycling, all the valuable metals that are in these things are very easily recycled. So all this relatively new thing to recycle batteries today, I wouldn't expect that. There's a plan to really ramp it up because of the value.
Okay, thank you.
We also wanted to give you an overview of the water-based fire suppression system. There are two approaches to that, there is an external and an internal version of the same thing, but we're talking about, again, either NFPA 13 or 15, which can be provided either above the enclosures, or in some cases, depending on the manufacturer, can be provided internally. Current installations that we have in the city are external of fire suppression systems. Normally, this is a dry pipe system that is connected to NFDC, which is located a safe distance from the energy storage facility.
So it would be extinguished with water?
Correct.
And it's more than extinguishing the system, it's cooling the system. So if you have any issue with energy storage, you want to maintain the temperature, just, that's the main purpose of the...
You're primarily trying to keep everything cool, so it doesn't spread.
So you said everything can be...
I'm sorry?
What's the chemistry of the battery, lithium ion or the metal heart?
It's lithium ion.
What type of battery?
Lithium ion, LFP specifically.
Lithium ion phosphate, which is a particular chemistry.
So you said everything's getting monitored remotely?
Correct.
If there's a problem, I'm assuming not everything can be treated or managed remotely. How long does it take somebody to get here if it's not a fire department response, but an emergency that needs to be handled? Where's the staffing, and how long does it take somebody to get here?
Yeah, so in the, I live about 25 minutes away from here. In the city, we have people that have to be on staff 24/7 to respond. We always have a person who's responsible. So we'll have to have a schedule, and people will, in the worst case, people drive off from an office down.
Yeah, the fire department in New York is requiring two hours' response from the operator.
To have a responsible person on site.
Within two hours?
Two hours, yeah.
Okay, and that's around the clock?
Yeah.
And the monitoring system also provides the capability to shut down the facility remotely, so you can shut down a specific enclosure or the entire facility as well. There is an option to do that remotely.
Even if it was under duress or on fire?
Yeah, you can disconnect the power to the unit.
What kind of training for fire departments goes into something like this?
So we're all being tested down in the city, or specific, to be a certified responder, and we all have passed an exam. But the truth of it is that these are not complicated fires, they require a great deal of water. But they're honestly adjacent to this, the CHIFFAD has way, way more complicated responses. This is really about going there, assessing it, and then putting water on it. There's not a lot of sophistication to the response, other than the control system.
And there are specific hazards that are associated with energy storage that the fire department needs to be familiar with, and we're providing training manuals and onsite training as well. So like I mentioned, the system, even when you're disconnecting the power, it's energized, it's hazards that people need to be aware of. Ventilation and explosion mitigation, again, is provided, but firefighters who are not familiar with energy storage need to be aware of the fact that they need to keep a safe distance, never open a door. This is something that is being responded to from a safe distance. So there is definitely specific hazards that we will have to go and do onsite training and provide emergency response manuals to the people who are going to be responding to that type of situation.
Other things you wanted to review with us?
Yeah.
Yeah, so, third item, we have, you had some questions about advantages and disadvantages of underground interconnection versus above-ground interconnection. We had submitted a letter from our interconnection consultant, engineer, to kind of give you an understanding of why we're going with an overhead option, and what are the disadvantages of underground, and we just wanted to go over a summary of those points, and see if you had any additional questions on that.
Can you just remind me, before you start, how tall the poles would be for the overhead?
85.
85?
85 feet, and you have multiple lines that are attached to it, so it's, the lines themselves are going to be between 65 and 80, maybe.
And how many lines would be going from the pole? I assume they're going to some of the buildings there?
No, just to the, well, basically, they will come down to, actually, you can see here. So this is before, or existing and proposed, so you can see that there's three, all three lines there. And that's at 85 feet. And what they're doing is they're going from the, you know, the substation portion of our facility to the actual substation. So the power is coming over at 115 KV, and it's getting transformed down to 345, and then it goes inside our facility at that voltage to the different batteries. So this is traveling from the substation to our facility at relatively high voltage. It's the same voltage that the substation is, that the substation is. And so the good news about that is that there's not that many lines, and they're not quite as big, but they're at high voltage, so they have to be high off the ground.
And the purpose of this facility is exactly, what is it going to do for the site?
So, our existing electrical grid is very inefficient. We have peaks, there are all this time when we are using a lot of power, and time we're using almost none. And because our system operates where, when you're using the power, it has to be produced at that exact moment, it ends up where we have way more power plants, a lot of which are not used. So there's some power plants that are used 7% of the time. And for us to pay for all those power plants to sit there idle, we still pay for them. The power produced from those plants when they use 7% of the time, the capital expense for the power plant, still, we still have to pay for that. So the most efficient way to have power produced and consumed is that it would be evenly produced all the time, or, you know, with, even with the gas generation, you would have fewer power plants producing all the time in a very flat line, and then the consumption would be used through batteries where people would pull. Now, simultaneously, we have a problem of climate change, so we're having to, we have switching to solar and wind, which are intermittent. So now both consumption and production are intermittent. And so matching those two things, batteries let you do that. It makes the existing infrastructure more efficient, so that's good for all of us, because also...
Through storage.
Through storage. Because essentially, what, the best analogy, I think, is highway. Say you have a three-lane highway, a four-lane highway, and all of a sudden, you have, because you're electrifying cars and heat, you have to have twice as many cars driving through that highway. If you can make them drive at night, then you don't have to build any extra lanes. If you need to make them drive exactly at peak, then you've got to make eight-lane highway. Energy storage basically lets you move the electrons, not at peak. So that's one thing it does, it really just flattens the demand curve, and allows us also to produce more intermittently.
As I remember from the last meeting, this is not really going to be supplying anything to this site. It's more for the Central Hudson area at large to allow this moderation of the demand that you're talking about.
That's not really true, this substation, for example, serves the CHIFFAD, right? And I think you probably know that there are power issues, right? Whether CHIFFAD is sensitive equipment, the power that is, the power is all connected, right? You can have problems in faraway areas that impact the quality of the power quite close. You can have, and so, so this facility also serves as a kind of buffer, right? Like I can unplug my laptop and I don't lose my work, because it's just used in the battery. So this is actually going to assist in this whole area that is developing now for, with, you know, Pepsi's coming, the CHIFFAD is improving, all of those, anyone connected to this substation has had much better quality power, and much more reliable power. And then all of those other substations, this substation is part of it already, all of those substations get supported the same way. All of those, I mean, 50 megawatts is quite a lot of power, this is 200 megawatt energy, quite a lot of resistance against SAGs and dips in quality, as well as sort of outages, and also peaks. This can be used every single day to flatten the demand and allow renewable energy to penetrate this area, and increase the reliability overall.
So it's mainly for I Park, but you have additional power capacity to help Central Hudson with the rest of the demand in the local vicinity? Or does it feed, once you feed it to Central Hudson, it goes wherever it goes?
It goes wherever it goes, so...
Correct.
So it helps them at the generating station to take care of the peak demand, or any, you know, or certain demands? This would automatically just supply the power?
Yeah, it helps them flatten, whenever they're...
Yeah, flatten the curve.
Whenever they're, yeah, whenever they're running, like at the edge, right? When they're starting to hit their capacity, it lets them, it lets them feed more people, because it's more efficient, there's more what's called headroom, the max between when you have your peak use and the substation capacity, that's headroom. Right now, the headroom, you know, it is what it is, but once you flatten it, you get more headroom.
Sure.
You can feed more new customers.
Yep.
And if the power supplying that substation went out, would that capacity still exist there to a certain timeframe?
Sure.
Yeah.
And mostly, you don't have to worry about, you know, mostly what you worry about is these... these, these quick SAGs, right? The SAGs that are 30 seconds or.
Yeah, power jumps.
Yeah. The quality of the power is bad, right? Most lights don't care, but sensitive equipment does.
Yeah.
Even elevators don't like bad power. So I think you probably also know that the state has a, as you should, you know, there's a mandate to build a lot of this all over the state, so this kind of thing is unique now, but it's going to be more and more all the time. So the state goals for this are six gigawatts statewide by 2030, 17 gigawatts, or sorry, 12 gigawatts by 2040 and 17 by 2050. So this kind of, and it's also shown that this reduces the cost of power to everyone in the state by essentially making things, making our existing wires we've already paid for more efficient.
So where are we today vis-à-vis that six gigawatts that we're trying to go for by 2030?
I don't know statewide, but it's in, certainly in the city, we're in the sub-one percent.
Got it.
The very beginning.
So I guess the real difference in, between underground and overhead is really cost, right? Number eight?
It's number one. So if this was a lower voltage, it would be easier to put underground, but because it's 150 KV, it's more expensive, you have to go deeper. And so we don't love putting it down there because it's more expensive, of course, but also if something happens to it below ground, it's more painful to fix it. We don't like that, we think that if you, the path has a bunch of tree roots, so you could be damaging the tree roots, which admittedly you don't see, but they're actually as damaging to the trees as trimming them. So we will have to take some trees, we're trimming and removing some trees, but we think that it's actually, you know, better overall. And then, you know, digging out will shut the roads down, et cetera. So this is the easiest thing to build, it's the cheapest thing to build, and it's actually the most reliable thing to build.
Yeah, and specifically, the numbers for reliability are coming from the requirements that we have that are established by Central Hudson. So we looked at the time it's going to take us to repair any issues if we're looking at the above-ground versus underground, and it's clear that if we're going to have any type of repair required, the timeline that is going to take for an underground scenario is not going to allow us to comply with the 96% reliability requirement from Central Hudson. So I think that's, it's number one for a reason, because we have that now as part of our contract, so.
Gotcha.
I think also, just so you know, there's that, there's a whole bunch of existing testing wells. This path runs smack through like three of them.
And another point is number seven, road closures. We're seeing that being dramatically different between the overhead option and having to go under West Drive. So the impact on the I Park campus, I think, also is going to be reduced with the overhead option.
In the city, do you go overhead in the city?
In some locations, you have overhead. It depends on the specific network and area. So in the Bronx, in some locations, it's overhead, and in Brooklyn, for the most part, we're seeing underground.
The voltage is lower, we're at 20, 13 volt, and 27 is 115, so it's.
How do you ensure that they don't, that wind doesn't take them down? Like, you know, what requirements are you?
Sure. I know power goes out all the time, right? You know, why is it an ice storm? But the truth of it is that these are metal stations, and the reliability of, the reliability of this will be the same as it is for a metal substation, right? The substation has 115 KV lines going north and south and connecting a whole ring. And so when you're dealing with taller stations that are steel, not, you know, tech-like poles, there are all those trees, and they're paying more attention to make sure that this wire matters a lot more, because it's not just to buy houses, it's to the substation. So that's.
There is a section of our code that basically promotes underground utility lines. It prefers power communication lines to be installed underground. There is some consideration for hardship based on the reviewing authority. So, I mean, it's something to think about, because our code prefers underground utility lines.
And how would they, the one mention here was the test wells. So once they got onto that site, they really couldn't mess with those test wells, because they're something that's monitored on a fairly regular basis. So they would have to circumnavigate all that in order to achieve what they want to do if they're going to go underground. Okay.
So how is electricity currently supplied from that substation, though, to the buildings that are there? Is that done underground, or is there some above-ground?
It's done, it's, they transform down to 13,000 volts, and then they have, I think, eight or 10 feeders that come out and loop through the campus underground. But they're at.
It's underground.
Yeah, there's, because there are so many of them, and they're at lower voltage, and then on the campus, they bring them down to 480. They want to use 480. We want to use 34,500, so we bring it over 115 and then transform it. So 13 KV goes underground, okay, even though frankly, it's not, it was also done a long time ago when it was, when there were test wells and stuff like that.
Is there anything in particular about this substation over other substations in the town? Why this location over other locations?
It's, for us, we like that we can get a piece of land that's very close to the substation. That matters a lot. We also like that it's an industrial area that is not in the middle of a residential area, you know, it's easier that way. And then also, the power quality is an issue here.
Well, but I mean, have you looked at any other substations throughout the town or the region?
So every.
Start with the town first, I guess.
So Central Hudson went out and asked people, asked not only us, but dozens of developers to go look for places to quit.
Like, there's a substation at East Corporate Park, you know, that you can't see from the road, it's not visible.
Yeah.
Over by the Amazon site. Did you look at that location?
You know, we, as I said, what happens is there's a procurement, and where everyone's motivated to go and look at everything. So we absolutely look at all these substations. We have a, I have a map of every single substation in its entire state, and we drill down, we try to find locations where there's rental, leasable area adjacent to a substation, that's a dream. And if we could find space next to that substation there, maybe we'll build another. There is a whole lot of work to do in terms of building a ton of these things. So usually when people are saying, well, we should put it out over there, our answer is yes, over there too. And also that.
Yeah, and that goes back to the state goals, right? We're talking about six gigawatt of energy storage, and we are probably at less than 10, 5%.
Yeah, yeah.
So every year, they're coming up with new requests.
Maybe the state's got to relax some of their wetland requirements and afford some other areas if the state wants this so bad.
You know, that's a very good idea.
That's a good point.
Trust me, permitting this stuff is not easy. We're suffering through, you know, we have 108 megawatts in the city in five-megawatt chunks. So we have dozens of projects on our end permit.
Okay.
Yeah, so we did these two renderings, showing a view from the north and a view from the south with the lines there. It's hard to see on the TV, but when, if you look at it on my computer, you can see it. And, yeah, so the next thing is, we're still working on I Park, there was a meeting today with them, we just need to, they have a plan to replace the parking that is being displaced by us by the leasable area, so we will submit that, but I don't have any respite unfortunately. And then we're hoping that you guys will name a lead agency so we can start that part of the process, the seeker process. And then we've also included here a whole bunch of NYSERA model laws, you know, NYSERA, if you want to build all this stuff all over the place, it's very hard for all the towns to adapt and to figure this stuff out, because it's so new. So there is a whole bunch of resources that NYSERA has in terms of permitting and model permits and model laws. We have links to those in case that's useful, as well as the NFP, NPA 855, which is the, you know, energy storage code, or safety code.
So if you recall, these, this project would require a special permit from the town board, because it would need the economic redevelopment special permit. So as far as process, they're in the sketch plan right now, they have not yet submitted the formal application, correct? Okay. So typically, the formal application is what triggers us to start the seeker process, but I think we've got a couple of things going on here. We've got to deal with the, the town board has to, we have to refer to the town board for the special permit, and I suppose there wouldn't be any harm in declaring our intent to be lead agency unless we require, unless the town board do lead agency, but I suspect that the planning board will want to do that.
The planning board would probably be lead agency, so I think we could circulate our notice of intent to be lead agency, but the point, you know, is going to be moved if you don't submit a full application eventually.
Now, would this piece of property would be subdivided off theirs, or you're just going to lease the land from them?
We're leasing a portion of it.
Okay.
A portion of that property.
And I believe if we submitted a full application, we just need to provide with the full fees, right?
Full fees.
Yeah, so I.
Does it become like accessible?
I don't know.
It might be subject to a pilot, we're looking into that.
Okay.
So Michael, on the last time that we've had kind of dual responsibility with the town board, did they not, did they not declare their intent to be lead agency as opposed to us?
I don't think, I don't think they've declared their intent on this one, and then normally for something like this, it, because this is going to require some environmental review, norm, and a lot of cases still defer to the, to the planning board on that. Not in all matters, but in this one, I would assume it's going to be a planning board lead agency.
Got it. Okay, other questions, comments by board members or town professionals? Interesting. So next steps would be to submit a formal application, I take it?
I think we've spent everything but the check.
I have occasion itself, we need to determine what is going to be done with the town board.
And I guess determine the next steps with the town board and how that should play out, right?
So you already did an EAF, right?
We have a draft that we submitted, yeah.
All right, so I don't know who they should appear in front of next at this point.
All right, so I think you've heard the planning board's concerns. You're going to have to come back here eventually, so I think probably next it would be to come back here, here, you know, I know you answered a lot of questions today, but I know there's some other research you have to do, so you might as well come back here first, I think.
And then we can let you know if we can get you on the schedule for the town board, we can sort of reach out and figure out how that would happen.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Welcome.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, next item on the agenda is Getaway, 17 Monte Cristo Trail.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
I head up the development group at Getaway, and before we talk about the very specifics of the project, I just thought it might be contextually a little helpful to know what it is that we do and how we approach our work. We're about six or seven years old, and over that period of time, we've opened 26 sites around the United States, and we'll have, are anticipating three more in the next few week, well, say the next two to three months as our overall plan. The way that we work is that we purchase land, usually in the 80 to 100 acre range, and we place cabins, I think you can see a picture of them, or RVs, actually technically. They're quite spread out, and really, our mission is to give people a place to get away. Our RV, these cabins are separated, we try to do the very least amount of clear cutting as possible, we try to reuse roads where they're available, we have no Wi-Fi, no TVs. The goal is to really get away, be able to have a campfire, read a book, we usually put in a nature trail, we're usually somewhat in close proximity to a place to hike, those types of things. We are fairly careful in the way that we, that we place things. The pads have a rock, so that when there's a campfire, we're very careful about spread of fire. We've actually, well, we have a thousand of these cabins and never had a fire, actually, so pretty good record. And we also maintain some, in addition to a back of house that sort of services, cleaning, supplies, et cetera, et cetera, we also have one permanent residence so that somebody's always on site 24 hours a day. I mean, most of the time, there's more than one person, but there is a person who lives on site in addition. We have a fairly large restriction on noise. As I said, we don't allow amplified music, and really, the goal is to really allow people to have a place to get away. The last probably important thing to know is, we have, a typical stay is two or three nights, but we have an absolute maximum of seven. There's, we don't want these to become residential in any way. This is really supposed to be a place to get away. And you also can't bring a tent or an RV of your own, we provide all, everything that you need. We don't have restaurants or F&amp;B facilities, people bring them, their own food in, or very typically, if they're there for a few days, they use local restaurants, and we like to actually advertise that and have, do quite a bit of outreach to the local business community, particularly restaurants and places where, places where people can purchase food and those types of things. I gave you a little handout, but we do have several of them in the Catskills, and we'd welcome you to take a look, and I'll hand.
Are you year-round?
We are year-round, yes.
Do you have water and wastewater connections?
We have water, electrical, and wastewater, yes. And in, depending, I mean, on the particular case, we either build them from scratch, or sometimes we've taken over other campgrounds, but, but yes, absolutely, and we're going to talk a little bit about it, but absolutely, we do.
What about in this particular case? Are they going to be hooked? Are there town services there?
No.
No, right? I didn't think so. So then you would be utilizing a takeaway service, like a pump-out, or you're going to have.
What are you talking about?
Yeah, of course. So this parcel in general, so this is in the southern area, east of the.
Could you just come to the microphone and just announce yourself, sorry?
Hi, I'm sorry about that. Tom Cade Alhan, project manager of the civil engineering firm, working with Getaway. I'm also here with Kate Cunningham, who's our lead designer for this particular parcel. So to answer the septic question for wastewater, so there's currently an existing septic facility on site. We're planning to test it to see its quality and if we can reuse it. I believe there's also a leach field on site that kind of goes hand-in-hand with the septic. We're also proposing to add an additional septic field in case the demand is more than what is existing on the field right now.
So you have no idea the capacity of the septic that's there now?
Not yet. We're currently doing our investigations this month.
Do you have any idea what was there prior to that necessitated the septic that was there?
project, was, is, is today and was formerly a lodge, restaurant kind of situation, so it does have.
This is the old Montarosa site?
Yes.
Like a day camp.
That's right. Yeah, I think you're right because it's Monte Cristo Drive there. So, and then, right off Long Hill Road, right at the bottom of, right at the county, county line there.
And do you have any idea, like, that facility, did it have 20 bathrooms, five bathrooms, you know, in comparison to what it is that you're proposing here?
Yeah, it was a few different structures, not sure the number of bathrooms exactly, but I think we do anticipate having to install an additional leach field. But, but the back of house that was mentioned where an individual would be there year round, that, that's going to be the existing building, and that's going to ideally utilize the existing septic.
And how do you control the comings and goings of people, like, so that, like, let's say you have X amount of guests staying in these cabins, how do you control, you know, just people arbitrarily coming onto site? You know, being that you just have one person that kind of seems to be the traffic cop or however that person is.
First of all, the sites are only, only allow for a single car, and, number one. Number two, you're not allowed to invite a guest. And so, we, and we have somebody around, we don't, I don't want to say that we're policing it, but we're circling around and taking a look at what's going on, making sure that people are, you know, being, being quiet and, you know, et cetera. So, we really don't allow for it, and we don't, we don't make a combination for it either. And it's very clearly stated prior to, to renting or, you know, for the, for the night. The, the other thing that I should note is the cabins are small. They are usually occupied by one or two people. There's a two, there is a two-bed version. It really doesn't work for, for adults, but it would work for, let's say, smaller children in addition. So, we're pretty careful about it, and we, and we've actually seen very, very, well, almost virtually no abuse of this policy.
And no gate control, though? There's not, like, a gate control entrance? They just come to the site? And do they check in with this individual, or how does that whole process?
So, one of the reasons we don't have this problem, I believe, is that the, the cabins each have a code, and they're changed obviously daily so that, for safety reasons. And so, about, about half an hour, an hour before your reservation, you get the code and are assigned to a location. So, we don't, and we also have, we, only, the only way to secure a reservation is through our website. So, consequently, it's not, well, we hope it's well-known, but it's not easily accessed.
And where are you based out of? Where is the actual, like, corporate office?
Yeah. Well, technically, we're in New York, but, but actually, literally, we're a virtual company, and I actually live about half an hour from here. Actually, lived for many years in Pauling, but actually crossed the state line and now live in Connecticut.
So, you mentioned a lot of other projects, I think 26 that are existing and six more in development, and, no?
No, just three more.
Okay. So, are those located in the state of New York as well, or whereabouts are they?
Sure. They are located, let's say, typically in a couple of hours of a large city. We have two in the Catskills, one in Mudus, Connecticut. We have one north of Boston in New Hampshire, a couple near Atlanta, one outside Washington, et cetera. So, if you, if you sort of look at large cities, there, there are one or two, New York's a little bit more, but around large cities. There's one near LA, one near Houston, et cetera.
And are they similar in size as well as services, you know, well and septic kinds of?
Very consistent. There aren't a few that are actually, are connected to town water and sewage because that's what they were. Usually, those tend to be boy scout camps or girl scout camps, not always, but, but many, many of them are on their own, their own septic fields, yep, including both of them in the Catskills.
Got it.
Michelle, does the town have anything in place to mitigate extended stay? You know, like, God forbid if this crossed over where there was trouble?
So, yeah, there's, one of the definitions in the code, I mean, it's only a definition, but we could, this would require a special permit, so we could add a condition on the special permit as part of the use if, if the planning board were to consider it.
Because this could run away on that if it wasn't?
Yeah, and I think, you know, that's, that's something that Getaway has been more than willing to entertain for other projects and throughout the state. So, you know, a site plan approval condition saying that, you know, people can only stay for a maximum of X amount of days, I think they would be, they would be willing to entertain. But also, in, in that same line with respect to the type of use that it is, we, we just reached out to the building department just for, just to confirm that this use constitutes the allowable, what's called the large-scale recreational development. You know, reading of the definition, it appears, you know, to fit very much squarely within that. It's just part of our practice, which is just to reach out to the building department first, get that interpretation, and then, of course, once that happens, we'll, we'll incorporate that into our application materials together with the EAF. And I think next time, this is obviously just the, the sketch plan conference, just giving you guys a, a general overview of the project. But next time around, we'll have the full environmental assessment form, probably some updated materials, I think, including steep slopes, just making sure that we're not having any impact there, perhaps some, some stuff with respect to wetlands. And then, we'll ask, I believe, the town planning board to act as lead, to declare their intent to act as lead agency. And we've already developed a list of coordinating agencies interested and involved that we would be sending the notices out to where you guys, not sure how you guys do it here, but happy to work with whatever process you, you guys have, so.
Now, if I could ask you, what's your average vacancy rate? Not holding you to anything, but just on average about?
It, it depends on, you know, weekends are different than weekdays.
Do you go to the microphone, please?
Pardon?
Go to the microphone. Thank you.
Yeah. So, it varies a bit seasonally, and also weekends are obviously more than weekdays. Weekdays, it kind of, it kind of slows down a little bit, and also, there's a higher propensity for, for single, single night stays in the middle of the week, somebody just trying to get away, maybe they have one day, versus weekends where very often people come in on a Friday and stay till a Sunday or Monday.
Would you ever anticipate that this thing would be 100%? I mean, I'm sure that you would be hopeful, but realistically?
I would love it. No, no. It, I could see that on some weekends, you know, a three-day weekend, sure, that's, we do get very booked. It's not, it's not, you know, I would love, I would love it to be, but I don't think that I can absolutely promise it to be.
I see you have a mix of one and two-bed cabins. Do you have a, an estimate on how many bedrooms total you're anticipating for across the 49 units?
Yeah, so, we do about 20% two-bedroom, 80% one-bedroom, and we also have two accessible cabins. So, and so that's, whatever the number is, it's off, you know, it's rounded up or down, but it's always, it's very close to that.
Okay. Have you consulted with the Dutchess County Health Department yet on what they're going to require for water supply and sewage disposal?
In the process. I have a conflict, but we're still investigating. But, yeah.
Right, because, you know, the bedroom kind of is going to be what drives your...
And we'll also have to go through them, through the county usually, or sometimes through the health, the New York State Health Department for campground permitting as well, so that gets layered into the process, just so you guys are aware.
And I, I think, I believe I spoke with one of you on the phone, but I told you that you, the roads need to be able to accommodate emergency vehicles.
All this, all this. And we, we have a combination of two-way and one-way roads, you know, so that, that all is, we work with, and, et cetera. Our new areas is.
Will these be paved roads?
Gravel.
Yeah, I would say where we have a certain slope, we have paved, but we try to keep the gravel a little bit, slows things down, keeps it a little.
I would just make a general comment that whatever surface treatment you decide or want to have, or the geometry of it, it just needs to be accessible for emergency access vehicles, including, you know, fire.
Fire trucks, yeah, absolutely.
Where are the units manufactured?
We have two locations, but the majority of them are made in a factory in Adams, Massachusetts. There is also a small number that we've tried from a company in Cincinnati, but I would say 95% of what's out in the wild is in, is from Adams, Massachusetts.
Interesting. So, other questions or comments from board members or town professionals? Very good. Then, I think what the next step would be to determine where you want to go from here and make a formal application?
Yeah, we'll be sending in some, just some revised materials, also the full environmental assessment form, a list of involved and interested agencies, you know, the whole nine yards, at which point, at the next meeting, and we'll submit that in time for the next meeting, and then, we'll ask you guys to declare your intent to act as lead agency, and then, we can get the circulation notices out.
Okay. Very good. Thank you.
Thank you for your time. I have one, one quick question. I think it's geared towards the town planner or engineer. So, with this plan in particular?
As you can see, we currently have, we found quite a bit of wetlands on the site, and I know there's a pretty low-rise wetland buffer where the ordinance states that there's really no development allowed in these certain areas. Given that this is a very low-impact kind of development that we're proposing, we do have some areas that will kind of go into the buffer, won't touch the wetlands whatsoever, but we will have some cabins, some gravel roads that will, that will go into the buffer. Is there any type of leniency or waiver process that we can kind of go through, or is this for, maybe a discussion for another?
Well, I'm, I'm just looking, and I know, I believe there are federal wetlands, right, and then, and local wetlands, and it wasn't DEC. But I say that when I scrunch my face because it looks like they are, a bunch of them are connected, so it's, you don't have no idea until you go out there and, if DEC may take jurisdiction over them, if they're connected to any larger wetlands. And I don't know that, I don't know the hydrology of the area, so I'm not exactly sure if there's any larger wetlands nearby that DEC might connect it to. But we really try to stay out of any wetlands and wetland buffers, and particularly, we also have the Indiana Bat that you have to be concerned of, and forested wetlands are their main habitat. So, you're going to run into potential habitat issues if you're touching the wetlands, and also, we just generally don't like to, to do that. I don't, it's hard for me to answer because I don't know exactly what you're proposing in those, in those wetland areas either, but I would say if you can steer clear of them, that would be.
Yeah, just, just to add to what, what he said, so, the, the way the site is laid out currently, a lot of it is following kind of existing dirt roads that the current campground was using. And a lot of the areas, like, within, those areas were already within those buffers, and also, they're, they provide just like scenic and beautiful recreational areas for the cabins, which is kind of crucial to the cabins, but the, the thought is just that to follow those existing pathways, it, you know, you want to cut down as few trees as possible, and that those areas were like the prime locations.
You had it delineated yet? The wetlands delineated?
Yes.
Okay. And did they, did they give you a report on whether or not they, did they weigh in, whether or not they thought they were just local wetlands or not?
Yeah, just, that was my understanding.
Core regulated.
And core regulated. And are they connecting the wetlands? Do they, are they hydraulically connected? Are they, is there drainage between them, or are they kind of isolated?
A little bit isolated. I mean, technically, the site all drains to the northeast, east, there's like, well, maybe a mile away, but.
The way our code is, it depends on the size of the wetland for the buffer.
Okay.
So, whether or not they're connected may make a difference in the size of the buffer that you need to apply.
Right. The way they're drawn, if you look a little, like, in the crunch, and whether, we did draw that in per the code, depending on the size of that isolated section, or if it was a water course or the pond itself. So, they are drawn in per the code, but I'm not sure about.
Well, maybe, I think maybe what we do is have a meeting and look at it. That might be the most helpful thing, and then, we could kind of.
Okay.
And I think that's going to be part of our next submission, which is, we'll have the wetlands, you know, delineation, things like that in there. So, once you guys have a chance to look at that, you'll have an idea as to whether they're connected, things like that, so.
And then, did you have, like, a variance needed because you weren't meeting the requirement, the bat, potentially?
The setback from the special use. So, yes, that is this loop area up here. And again, that's just an area that is already being utilized. It's pretty open. There aren't a lot of trees, and if you look to the north of that, well, the adjacent property is like the state park, and I think the, the AT runs through there, and it's also like a 100-plus foot sheer face, so we wouldn't really be disturbing our neighbors, but it's pretty screened. But, yeah, it's just, it's just prime, primary again for the cabins.
Okay. So, we'd have a variance request to consider and a special permit request to consider?
Okay. Got it. So, it sounds like a meeting though is definitely in order before you move too, too much forward, meeting with the planner. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you very much.
Interesting. Next item on the agenda is Paradise Preserve subdivision.
Interesting. Yeah. I like the Nani pine. Let's go. And it didn't look like the kind of food report from Asia either, which is, I didn't think it was. Especially it's right there north of us.
Yeah, okay.
I'm in Shakala, and Mr. Robert Borchel, Seth Borchel, Mr. Robert Borchel is not here yet, but Seth Borchel is, they are from Paradise Preserve, and today, we are here to, this is our submission number one, strategic review of the six-lot subdivision. The owner applicant is Paradise Preserve, and I am the site engineer, Shakala engineer. So, the project is located at Deverly Lane, at the Craig Hollow Road, and it's highlighted on here. So, as you can see, it's in the vicinity of 84, and the parched trail runs north of the property, and it is located in the newer city leave. and it is located in the York City D E P water channel. It's also located between Tamlope's Fishville, the, I'm relying between Tamlopeekne and Tamlope's Fishville. The applicant, and this is the Cray Hollow Road and I-84, the applicant owns this lot, which is 93 or 93.3 acres. You are enrolled by the applicant, applicant's landlot, 19-acre lot adjacent, and then lots in Tamlopeekne. The subdivision is being proposed of the 93.3-acre lot, the yellow lot here, and this map shows the lot area, which is 93.3 acres. There are wetlands on the York State D E C wetland, EQ 23, and you can see also the area of boundary of, and here, roadway boundary, which overlaps the wetland areas, and those are 20 and 1/2 acres. Steep slopes over 33% in blue, 31 acres. The property's zone are three residential, this is the zoning map. The property use history was obtained from the accessory's office, and around 1986 and prior, it was listed as, the accessory's code was 417, which represents camps, cottages, and bungalows, and seasonal residences, one family residence, and multi-purpose, multi-structure residential property. This map shows property or portion of, which was developed from 1979, when their owner had a survey done, and it showed the labels I signed based on the accessory's cards, sketches, and what kind of match the plan. There was two family, there were, our residential, this tennis court. This pond here, if you travel by here, it's still evidence of it was used as a swimming pool. There is, I have heard that the property was used in the past as a girl scout camp, but from the records which I could access, I haven't come across that yet. So based on the code, number of lots, property can be subdivided, is governed by this equation, and when we do the computation, it says that theoretically, the property could be subdivided into 16 lots. The proposal is for six lots, and the prepared anticipated zoning compliance table, which we are hoping we can comply with, and there will be still some tightening of certain areas, but we are pretty confident that this, these numbers will remain the same. The minimum buildable area is exceeded on all of the lots for the three-acre zone. So the very first thing, we are looking for the onsite wastewater treatment system, and that would be the approval of the issue by Dutchess County Health Department, York City D E P, the private laws, Dutchess County Health Department, outsides, access on driveways, and stormwater management, and there may be other agencies. So the very first thing we did is to look for the area suitable for septic systems, started with the slopes, the Cray background hatch, this slope's over 50%, which is the limiting slope for septic systems, for the absorption areas. And we have the five, sorry, six lots, five smaller ones and the large one in the middle. On this lot, the septic system was approved last December, or December 21, and it was designed by Ralph Alfonso T. So there is an approval for septic system in this location. There is an ongoing or open submission for lot number six with capacity of 440 gallons, and also the field test, and the application submission was, and design was done by Ralph Alfonso T. This summer, in August and September, we did field testing, which were imp test and pre-pulsion test. They were witnessed by D E P and the Department of Health, and those tests were included in September 21st. So once we found the areas suitable for septic systems, that's when the other components There are some natural access points along Cray Hollow Road, which we are using, and from those, we found areas suitable for outsides, these driveways designed per the town standards, and stormwater management facilities. We are relocated based on separation distances, require separation distances for septic So basically, the proposal was for six lot subdivision. Lot number one would be a three-bedroom house, lot number two would be a four-bedroom house, lot number three would be two-bedroom house, number four, four-bedroom house, number five, five-bedroom, it would be four-bedroom house, and also bedroom or floor from a barn accessory building. So that septic would be designed for 550 gallons, and the lot number six would be for 442 gallons. So right now, this is where we are at, we had done some, we had a wetland scientist to come to delineate the area of the land along the lot number four boundary, but it still needs to be surveyed on the flats, the surveyor, the, and it's where we are
So on the six lots that you've delineated there, is there any structures on that property at all right now?
Yes, those are...
And of the property with the existing structures, are there septic systems that are...
Well, still to remain to be uncovered.
Okay.
Because, as I said, I, in the past, I was able to get septic systems for cases where, for schools, or this type of, that type of facility, not residential, from archives. There might be somewhere filed, if it was indeed girl scouts camp, that the girl scouts would have to... The oldest property on the site is served from 1936, and there were some, there was later on, 1950s.
So isn't your intention to try to utilize some of what's there, existing? So you're going to eradicate everything that's there, including the buildings?
Well, the buildings are not in good shape.
Yeah, so they're going to be...
Yeah, they are not.
Okay.
And they are not occupied?
No.
Okay, got it. Are they to be removed, or?
I'm sorry?
Are they to be removed? I didn't catch that on the plan.
Well, the lot number six, I, you know, depends...
Because they become maybe an attractive nuisance to these new homes in the area.
Right. That's all I'm trying to figure out.
Well, I don't, I mean, everybody has a different opinion about saving old structures or not. These are not...
Usable?
...structures to be saved.
Okay. So I mean, I think that's...
And I, who likes...
Yeah. I think what we're just trying to understand is how it proceeds from here, like, with what's there, and then what you're going to go from with what you have. So right now, is your intention to eradicate, eliminate every structure that's on that property, and then start from ground zero? You're going to have perk tests done, and, you know, you have obviously a plan in place for the homes you have, so you're going to perk test each site, you know, as long as it conforms to what our requirements are, and then go brand-new on everything from step one through to the end.
So then, pre-pulsion test, and the testing field work was done for the, for all six slots, and slot number two, I don't know, slot number two here, it's the second from the left, the septic system is...
But you've had them done without getting permission to build the homes? Is that what you're saying? I'm just trying to, I'm not trying to be facetious, I'm just trying to understand.
Well, the septic system, if you are subdividing a land, it's the, one of the most governing component. So that's why we started, it's even feasible, because the property has steep slopes, it there is rock, you know, rock out rocks, so that's what we were trying to identify areas which could support septic. We did the field work with D E P and Health Department, and I'd say the next step will be pre-application conference with D E P and submission to the...
Do those tests have a shelf life? I'm not even 100% sure. So if they've gone out and done that, how does that work in reverse?
Well, approval's good for five years, so I don't know about the actual tests themselves.
Okay.
Approval's good for five years.
Okay.
But the intention is to have a single fam, one single-family home on each of the lots?
Right.
And all the other structures would be removed? So we're not talking about having more than a single-family home on each lot?
And not an accessory structure, you know, like...
And there'll be no further development of what you would be seeking approvals on? Like, you have that one parcel, which is in, is it like 60 acres?
Six acres.
So there would be no intention to come back towards us to like, subdivide that or any of that type of stuff? This is a one...
I can't really speak to them, because I...
Isn't there a five-year requirement, though?
Yeah, but, I mean, I think it would require them to come back in front of the board if they were ever going to do that.
Right. Okay.
You mentioned earlier that there was a 17-acre landlocked plot that was nearby there?
I think it went beyond into the Beekman.
Oh, yeah, it was very close. I was just wondering if there was any plan while this is going on to maybe put some sort of access to that? Because I'd hate to see 17 acres just sitting there doing nothing, but I don't know if you own that or not. 19 acres.
Yeah, 19.
It's 19 acres, and it's a, it's a steep slope, it's a little mountain.
And is it owned by the same party?
I'm sorry?
Is it same ownership?
But it's a separate plot.
So that's not included in what you're proposing here?
No. The seventh lot, which is...
If it's owned by the same party, is it under the same ownership as far as what, the ownership of this Paradise Preserve subdivision? Like, I'm just curious as to why they would leave it out, landlocked?
As opposed to including it?
Including it in there if it's not usable? Like, why wouldn't it be a part of this submission?
Yeah, I cannot talk to this, because we were hired to see if subdivision is feasible. In my opinion, the only time I can say subdivision is feasible is when you get the approvals.
Good point.
So, but so far, you know, we got through the field testing, and the next thing is is the, as far as the septic systems go, storm water management.
Well, it's part of the process. We get preliminary approval and then the health department, so it's just part of the process.
And what I presume storm, storm water management is gonna be an issue that you're gonna have to deal with, with the steep slopes and everything.
We will have to address that.
Yes, okay.
And the wetlands?
So I think it seems like at this point, the applicant's gonna go speak to some other outside agencies like the Health Department and then they're gonna continue to do their due diligence and then they'll see if they want to make a formal application.
Yes.
And it would be moving forward to.
And you're liable to lose other structures.
Correct.
And also, as I said, there is one area of the wetland was delineated by the wetland scientist, but can the environmental survey, the wetland delineation be focused on the area which is being, in other words, you don't have to delineate wetland on the entire site in the.
Just in within the disturbing, in the area that you're disturbing?
Right, or.
Or grading.
Footprint of the loss.
Correct, anywhere you're disturbing, anywhere there'd be disturbance. If you're removing trees or anything like that, it would also have to be delineated, but that's it. You don't have to go, if it's, you know, if it's, if your development is on the one acre closest to the road, you don't have to delineate wetlands on the 10 acres in the back.
Right, so.
Okay, well, I'm gonna compliment you on your presentation. I think you made it easy for us to follow how you've evaluated all the details and determined feasibility. So as Michael just summarized, I think your next step is to continue visiting with agencies and determine when it's, you want to come back for a formal application.
You know, it's like, you want to make a dress, you buy a fabric, you have the fabric and now you just know what you can do with the fabric. Or it's like an arm or a stretcher.
Right, okay. Great. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening, members of the board. For the record, my name is Kevin Solely. I'm a licensed professional engineer in the state of New York with Solely Engineering. That's a tough act to follow, that was a great presentation. But I hope I can try to do as well. So we're here tonight to talk about a project on Route 82. So the sites, just to familiarize everybody, so this is Route 82, the north is actually up, so it's kind of turned to the, to the right. But, so it's just south of the intersection with Clove Branch Road. It's actually an assemblage of four parcels, 1088, 1090, 1094, and 1096. Site's currently undeveloped. It's just north of the Ace Veteran, Ace Veterinary Hospital. Valley Church is just to the south, down here. And site's currently undeveloped. The four parcels are zone B1. And we are looking to potentially bring an application for a proposed stack and store self-storage facility. So this is a fully contained, climate-controlled self-storage facility. I think this board has some familiarity with it, with some recent applications that have come through. We'd be proposing a three-story, 82,500 square foot facility. We would be proposing to construct 28 parking spaces on the property and then land bank an additional 58 spaces to comply with the parking requirements. And Stack and Store is actually a new brand that's kind of coming to the market. They have one open in Patterson, New York, one in Milton, and one in Rotterdam, and then a number of facility locations in Connecticut that are currently in development and underway and even looking into Massachusetts. One of the reasons that we're here tonight with the sketch plan application is when we wanted to introduce the project, but also get some feedback and see if it's something the board may be supportive of. Because in order for, for us to make the project work, we would need relief from, from two components of the zoning, of the zoning regulations. One, we would be looking to have a three-story facility, and there's only two stories permitted in the current zone. And also, we would be looking to propose a floor area ratio of .44, where .35 is permitted. You know, one of the things that I think would be a good, you know, benefit of this project is from a design standpoint, the architecture is designed to create a very residential feel. We want to be sensitive to the context of our surrounds. And this is actually some preliminary renderings of what we'd be looking to, to build here in East Fishkill. One of the, as I mentioned, this is a fully climate-controlled facility, so it's not, you know, some of the more, you know, quintessential self-storage facilities. There are no overhead bay doors around the perimeter, so those aren't visible. We aren't proposing any outdoor storage for anything like that. So it's really is an architectural, you know, style and feel that's much more residential in nature. So we think that that helps to minimize the impact of that, you know, potential third story we're proposing. But these are just some kind of preliminary renderings of what we would be looking to, to, to build here. But we wanted to see and solicit some feedback from the board to see if this is something you would be supportive of as it would require some relief from your zoning regulations. So, you know, obviously, we understand this would be the first step in a, in a multi-stepped project, but a multi-step process, but we want to kind of get some feedback and, and gather your thoughts to see if this is something you could be supportive of that we could start working on in more detail.
So in keeping with the three stories, what would be the maximum height that the structure would reach?
So we would, we would be less than 40 feet in total height. And obviously, as you look at kind of how you calculate building height, it's, we'd have to do, you know, some additional analysis to verify exact, exactly that. But roughly, it's roughly 12 feet floor to floor.
Is this a standard color scheme for Stack and Store?
It is, yeah. The other projects that are under construction, or that are open in Patterson, the, the black, black, red, and white is, is kind of their colors that, that they're proposing with these facilities.
It's actually pretty attractive. I just, oddly enough, I just passed the one in Patterson yesterday. I had to go out there to pick something up. And I was, it was interesting to see the design, the way that it was built, more like a residential or kind of like a complex structure for almost like a mall or, you know, like a drive-up mall or something. Yeah, it was definitely, it was nice.
It's certainly one of the differentiators that we're, we're looking to do with this, with this concept, you know, rather than the, you know, the U-Hauls or some of the other larger ones, it's like you just kind of see the rows of doors around the perimeter and even their marketing. It's like they have the windows so you can see the, the units with inside, or they even have, and some of them they actually have, you know, there'll be faux windows with faux doors inside to kind of give that, give that, you know, aesthetic. And then that's something different, a little bit different than what we're trying to do with, with this product. But we do think it'd be a great, you know, it'd be a great addition. We think the property works, it is, you know, it is an opportunity to kind of create, consolidate four existing parcels to, to create something that could be, you know, a great addition of the community, but we would need some, some relief.
Do you, have you had any of these types of facilities where you've built them two stories?
No, just based on the, the model, you know, and because it's a climate-controlled with elevators inside, you know, you need a, you know, you need to, to meet some minimum thresholds from a square footage standpoint, from a usable area standpoint, in order to make the, make the projects, you know, financially feasible. So we haven't been able to pursue, you know, anything less than three stories. We've gone taller, we've gone up to five stories for some projects, but we wanted to do something that's more modest, given the, the context of the site and what we're looking to propose.
The one in Patterson is three stories?
Yes, yes it is.
You'd have to come, I'm sorry, to the microphone.
With me here this evening is Shane Reynolds from, from Stack and Store.
Yeah, maybe Shane Reynolds. I'm Director of Acquisitions for Stack and Store. It's pretty close in design to what you're looking at there, but the third floor is basically hidden into the mainards of the roof. So it appears from a distance to be a two-story building for the roof.
Which I think this aesthetic does do, right? We kind of have like dormers and, you know, kind of the way that we've, we've structured the, the architectural, it does kind of feel like a two-story building, but there is a full story of, of, of units up, up there.
Can you walk back through the parking for us again?
Sure, so, so, you know, traditionally, from a, from a operation standpoint, the parking requirements for facilities for like this is, is very minimal. What we, you know, generally what happens is, you know, we're proposing, you know, a single access, but the office is a small component in the corner of the building here. It's a, it's a securitized facility, so there's gates on both sides of the drives to protect against, you know, so that only customers there can go, go towards the rear. We would be proposing 14 spaces in front of the facility and then 14 to the rear of the facility. You know, I think in, in reality, they need 10 to 12 spaces to really function. But when we look at, you know, the, the current regulations with kind of how it's structured, I think we could certainly support and demonstrate the parking requirement really is more consistent with what we'd actually propose to construct. But, you know, I know that the, the zoning regulations allow for land-banked parking and you do have requirements for storage and warehousing. So I think it's kind of more of a, you know, looking at the proposed use. If we had to comply with the, the storage and warehousing requirements of, I think, one space per thousand square feet, we would need to, to, to demonstrate compliance that we could build them in the future if we needed them. But from a practical standpoint, you know, these landbank spaces to the, to the north wouldn't actually be needed to be constructed, you know, so we could minimize the impervious surface and minimize the disruption and the clearing as such would be associated with it.
Michelle, you did quite a study for parking for the previous project that we looked at a few months ago, and does this kind of come close to what we determined would be appropriate?
Yeah, I mean, I don't even know if that one had this many spots. I think it was even fewer, yeah.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
And that's, and that's what we're seeing, you know, I think from a zoning regulation standpoint, I think a lot of them are kind of catching up with this as a, as a use, as it is becoming much more pronounced in a demand standpoint. You know, I think some of the studies that are coming back, there's a huge demand for, for this type of, of facilities. And, and in reality, the parking requirement isn't nearly as, as consistent with what was, you know, in the, kind of the older zoning regs when they just talk about warehousing or storage, which sometimes would require more if there were employees and things like that. But from a self-storage standpoint, you know, what, what we have shown with just the 28 in the front and the back is more than ample, more than adequate to satisfy the requirements.
What does the building look like on the other side? So it looks obviously very nice from the front, but what does it look like in the back?
So this would actually be kind of towards the rear. So it would just be kind of less windows. We'd still have some architectural fenestration so that we kind of create, you know, relief horizontally, but not necessarily as much aesthetic around the, around those areas. And from a site layout standpoint, you know, there's already, there's some, there's some topography and terrain which kind of acts as a buffer through there, so we'd be able to maintain a lot of that, a lot of those woods to really kind of screen it from the rear. And from the, from the north as well, because this parcel is also, as you can kind of see here, so there's, you know, woods here, woods here. There's a small business-owned parcel here, but, you know, to the, to this is residential and kind of from this line over is residential. But this is actually his own business, it's just, you know, not part of this assemblage. So I think we'd be able to provide really good screening from any of those sites that aren't visible from 82.
I got a dumb question that you may not know the answer to, but this is bugging me on here. The, the addresses on Route 82 are 1088, 1090, 1094, and 1096. What happened to 1092?
I don't know that answer. You know, I'm not sure, yeah, I don't know.
Okay, that's, that's fair enough. I wasn't sure that you would, but just strikes me as odd that it's missing.
And this is gonna be well and septic?
Yes, and thankfully, something like this, I mean, they don't have a big septic generation or water generation. But we'll be verifying that as if we, you know, if this board is supportive, we'll obviously go through those exercises.
And the office will be, what kind of hours of operation for the office?
Shane Reynolds again, standard business hours. We'll have somebody employed there. Usually, a typical building will have the staffs with two staff members, two full-time staff members. And depending on zoning regulations, somebody will, will not be on-site after those hours. In some cases, customers will still have access to the building, but it's completely securitized. So the entrance portion would be key-coded, only the customers would have those codes. And there's 24/7 off-site security monitoring, pretty much every square foot of the property.
Interesting, so.
So I want to make sure everyone understands that there's two variances that are requested. One is for height and the other is for floor area. And, or FAR, that's what's called floor area ratio. And what that basically mean, or the way you determine a floor area ratio is you divide the total area of the building by the total area of the lot, not to be confused with lot coverage, because lot coverage is just the footprint of a building versus the lot. Okay, so that would be a percentage. This, this is supposed to, floor ratio is supposed to sort of control the bulk of a building, okay? And because it's going to three stories, it's, it is slightly larger than what, and I don't think it's much of a floor ratio variance that's required, but it's because it would be going to three stories as a bulk of your building that would be typically allowed in this code zoning.
Right, yeah, it's, it's nine hundredths over the floor ratio, but just to, to echo her comments from a.
Thirty, thirty, yeah, it's over 30% variance, right?
Right, so, you know, but from a lot coverage standpoint, you know, we're allowed 75% lot coverage, we're only proposing 32%. So we're consolidating our development impact from a footprint standpoint, from a, you know, conservation standpoint, and then from a building coverage ratio, you know, we're allowed 35, we're proposing 15. So, so again, we're, we're far under those kind of horizontal limits, but yes, to, to the point, we are, we do, we would need relief on the overall.
We don't typically, we don't typically hear about floor ratio here. It's very, very common in a city.
Yeah.
And, and you don't, because of the, because you don't reach the heights a lot of times, but I just want to make sure everyone understood what they were asking for, okay?
Yeah, so when you mentioned. Do you have any buildings out that way? I know like the masonry place, that's like, there's a contractor masonry yard. Does he have a height variance there? Like, I'm just trying to kind of put it in.
It's a single story for the most part, I don't think it's over 35 feet.
It's a paleen or something?
Yeah, paleen.
I don't think we granted.
But he's got a peak, he must have a peak variance.
So the height is measured, if, if there's a peak, the height's measured to the, the joist, basically?
Yeah, so, okay, so not at the peak.
The color time.
Yeah, I'm just curious, you know, symmetrically going down that road, are there any other buildings even remotely close?
Everything on that road is very tiny.
Yeah, I know.
Almost like houses and.
Yeah, pretty much.
But, but even the church is low and like wide.
I think there's a church people.
Yeah, the church is pretty tall.
They have people.
Even across the street though, like the, it slopes down, so the, the strip mall across the street is small. Like everything in that area is very small, and then this is gonna be very, very big and kind of stand out significantly going down 82.
A lot's elevated a little bit.
Right.
Have you been to the fire advisory board yet?
Not yet, no. We wanted to come to this board first before we go through, but we obviously know there'd be several steps next to this, but.
Yeah, I think that's one of the concerns with the two and three stories is that their equipment may not be tall enough to go up to the top.
It's an interesting possible issue.
We'd have to find that out, that's a good question.
Do we have any, any history with people asking for three stories, or we only permit two stories? I mean, it's.
Well, we've actually. Well, we've actually, I mean, we changed zoning to allow three stories via special permit in the Hopel Hamlet currently.
Got it, right.
No one's done that yet. That was, it's a very new change. And then the other buildings that would be larger than three stories would be in the industrial areas, like on the Icarus campus, and that's about it. So it was made to be sort of the town center height change.
So that's something that we're encouraging in the, in the Hamlet.
In the Hamlet, hopefully.
Because you would have mixed-use type, you know...
It was for mixed-use, basically.
Retail, downstairs, living.
Residents upstairs, yeah.
Okay.
I think developing the lot is a great idea. I just think this is massive in scale compared to everything else that's on that, on that whole stretch of 82. So if you have the option to make it a little bit smaller, I, you know, I understand the three stories and all of that, but just the scale of it in comparison to everything else on that road, it's going to be very much sticking out.
Sir, when you mentioned the lot coverage before, what was it, your proposed lot coverage?
I think we're at 32 percent.
And that's for the building and the parking around the building?
Correct.
Not taking into account the future bank parking?
Correct. Because, and I, and I think the regulations actually permit us to kind of establish what the actual requirement would be here. If the use isn't specifically identified, I think we may be able to, I mean, we could certainly work with staff to see if, you know, self-storage is a little bit different than your normal storage and warehousing uses. But yes, and I think that's, that's part of the, part of the, part of the analysis, right? Would it be better to, if we were to, financially, if the model worked with a two-story building, but we had to clear substantially more trees, create substantially more impervious surface, is that really better, you know, from a, from an environmental standpoint? So it's kind of part of the challenge that we're, that we're working with.
I guess one of the questions would be actually for us, based on what Sarah said, would you consider making it a two-story operation? Or if this board wouldn't allow a three-story operation, would it just be a scrap at that point?
I, you know, I think they, I think they'd have to kind of take a really close look at it and go through the financial model to see if there is, it is something that could still be viable. So I don't think I can give you the answer right now.
Yeah, I guess we would like to maybe potentially understand that because if it's an option, because we don't even know at this point if our fire department would be capable of containing a fire in a three-story building right now. So I guess there's some questions on our end, obviously, that we'd have to understand, but, you know, we would want to also understand, would the potential be that you could make it a two-story building and, you know...
Or maybe along the lines of Sarah's concern, maybe show us a streetscape kind of thing, representation of how it does look next to the other adjacent properties.
And, and also, I know, you know, you've mentioned trees and buffers and things, but stepping back, there are houses on, you know, three sides, and that's what they're going to be looking at. So to see from, you know, the residential perspectives of what this is actually going to do for them, because again, everything else is low, this is going to be high, it's going to be, you know, above the majority of the trees. It would be, you know, all down, what is that, Clove Branch Road and to the back, there's all houses in there. So just to see what they would see would be...
Yeah, we can, we can certainly look into that and kind of provide some more of those graphics and visuals which may help, you know, kind of maybe give some comfort to what we're proposing.
Right. Yeah, certainly help when, when you ultimately meet with the residents.
Right.
Or make a presentation at public hearing.
What's the setback from 82? You had 100 feet?
I believe 40 feet front yard, and we're actually at 91 from a building standpoint.
That's why I was just wondering how far back it is.
Yeah.
And so procedurally, you would have to get the variances from the zoning board of appeals, which is a different board. So, I mean, this, but this board here has control over the architectural features, so both boards are obviously very important to this project.
Of course, yes, yeah. Yeah, and I believe this board refers us to zoning board of appeals.
And you refer there from the board, yes.
And I guess also the fire advisory board to find out about if they're capable of...
Oh, no, they're obviously very important as well, but you'll be their enforcers.
Yeah.
Right.
So at this point, do we want to refer them anywhere? I mean, at this point, or do we wait till the formal application comes in?
I think one thing you could do too is if, now I know this is the first time you've heard this feedback, so I know you're going to look and see what you want to do. So if, you could always, you don't necessarily have to come back here first. You can go to the ZBA if you want to. You can just apply to our building department, get a denial letter, and then you go straight to our zoning board. Because if you determine with your business model, if you don't get the three stories, then it's not going to work. You'll at least know there if you could even get the three stories.
Right, right. And I think, and again, I think, I would hope that, you know, I think some of the discussions from a conservation standpoint with the reduced impact from a impervious surface standpoint and things like that and coverage standpoint hopefully will help, could be a benefit, but...
And I understand those points too, and just, you know, so while you're here during the sketch plan phase, I know there have been some recent self-storages that were approved within, you know, the height limit, so you'd have to explain why, you know, this is different than that. And also, community characters are big, it's one of the five main factors for the ZBA that they have to review via law. So as Sarah said, if all the buildings around it are small and if this is going to be significantly bigger, how would that impact community character? How could that be mitigated?
Yeah. Again, yeah, I think a streetscape kind of depiction would really be helpful to everybody.
Yeah, we can certainly look at that.
But otherwise, I can see, you can probably see that as a board, I think, we're generally accepting of it. I think the design, which you've come up with, is excellent. Nothing like what I, what we expected. And, and so I think we'd be eager to continue to hear out where you're going with this and take a look at further representations.
Great.
So, very good.
That's, that's why we were here tonight. We wanted to get that feedback and we appreciate the, you know, the comments, and we will, we'll take it from here.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
So with that, we've completed the agenda. Is there any further business to be brought before this board? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we adjourn.